Okay, so I will, we'll get the meeting underway. This is the January 2nd, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. I have it at 7:02 PM. And there's the agenda. The first is a public hearing, Eagleness subdivision, 125 River Road. Anne, do you have that as the clerk to read?
I do not. Maybe Sue has a copy she can share.
I will pull one up.
Thank you. Give Ray a couple of minutes.
There you go. You can't pull it up, so you could probably just read it.
Yeah.
Oh, I can do that as well. Would you like me to do that?
It doesn't matter. One of, one of you has to read it.
Read it, so that would be fine.
Okay, so I'll go ahead. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 81T, the West Newbury Port Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, beginning at 7:00 PM, to consider an application for approval of a definitive plan to subdivide two existing building lots into four building lots, two existing and two new, including a new roadway. The properties are located at 125 and 171 River Road, assessors map R24, lots 12 and 10A, and are in the Residence B zoning district. The applicant is Michael Fusco of 64 Main Street, West Newbury, Mass. The application and plans can be viewed online at the West Newbury Legal Ads Public Hearing Notices page, or please contact the planning office, (978) 363-1100, extension 125, or at townplanner@westnewbury.org to view the plans in person. Interested persons may participate in the meeting by joining from computer tablet or smartphone using the link provided. Anne Bardine, clerk.
Thank you. So before I kind of get into some of the rules of the road here for this hearing, and there are some names that are not our usual attendees at these meetings, we'll just introduce ourselves. I'm Brian Murphy, Chair.
I'm Anne Bardine, Planning Board Member.
Deb Hamilton, Planning Board Member.
Tim Cronin, Planning Board Member.
Okay, thank you. And we have one member, Ray Cook, who is not in attendance at the moment. He may be joining us. Okay, so the, the process with hearings, all public hearings where there's an application before the board, we seek the input of the applicant. They may, hopefully will be sharing some of their drawings and commentary and thoughts on their application here. At that, when that is concluded, the Planning Board members will, will ask questions that may be pertinent at the time, and then we'll seek some input from members of the public. The, this will be governed under the subdivision rules and regulations. This is not a special permit hearing. As such, when the time comes to vote, and I will say that, that is not tonight. The, it's a majority required. So three members must be in the affirmative. A special permit requires four, but this is not a special permit. Our town consultant engineer is a Meridian Associate. They are in attendance tonight and will be providing some commentary as well. The applicant pays the fees for their review, but they review it on behalf of the town in accordance with our own regulations. We may discuss the need for a site walk. That, we'll, we'll talk about that later on. And then ultimately, we'll determine the future date when to continue the hearing. And that will be dependent on things that we get into tonight. So having said that, who is here for the applicant? And please identify yourself.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dennis Grecchi with Andover Consultants, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Michael Fusco.
Welcome, Dennis. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. The, the floor is yours. And, you know, if you need some assistance with putting anything up or whatever, just Sue can help. She does, does wonders.
All right, I will attempt to share my screen so the board can let me know if they can see what's projected there.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so as the chairman described, I'm going to give an overview of the project, what's proposed. And then throughout the presentation, or at the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. So the project is comprised of two separate lots. So it's 125 River Road, which is the larger parcel on the left, and 171 River Road, which is this skinnier parcel here on the right. Together, the two parcels total approximately 46.4 acres. There are some wetlands on site, which we did have delineated. You can see them here in the aerial. There's kind of a darker area here, another darker area here, and there's another small wetland finger up here. This project has been submitted to the Conservation Commission, and we did open that hearing up last month. We are continued before, going forward, we'll be at the next meeting. To give the members of the board, of the board, an idea of the scope of the work, we'll be developing approximately 2.75 acres of the approximately 46 acres. You can see here, we've superimposed what's proposed. We have a single-family dwelling, a single-family dwelling. This is the existing house at 171, which will remain. So a portion of the subdivision would take some land from 171, and then the remainder of the land would come from the 125 River Road parcel. So zooming in, what we have here is a right-of-way, which would create frontage for the two building lots, as the chairman described. So we'd have a buildable lot here with frontage along this new way and a second buildable lot here, again with frontage along the buildable way here. The wetlands we're showing here in green, so we do have two wetland impacts. So we are going to be impacting approximately 1,300 square feet of wetland, which we're proposing to replicate with 2,700 square feet of wetlands. Again, the Conservation Commission is reviewing those impacts. Just wanted to touch on that for the board. We do have a limit of work shown here again, so we're not proposing to clearcut either of these sites. We're intentionally trying to leave much of the site as wooded as possible to provide a buffer to all the surrounding neighbors. The site, excuse me, the roadway itself is going to be 18 feet wide, and that's what's proposed in order to minimize the impervious surfaces on the site. There will be private septic and private wells, which are again shown on the site. There's a well here, septic system proposed, approximate location for septic. Again, approximate location for a septic system and a well in the front of the house here. To mitigate the impact from stormwater runoff, we proposed two different features. So one is a roof drywall. So in the front of both houses, you can see we proposed a 1,000 gallon drywall, which will collect roof runoff and allow that to infiltrate. And additionally, we have along the side of the driveway and roadway, we have this crushed stone infiltration trench. So you can see that crushed stone running along the length of the proposed roadway and also along the proposed gravel roadway here. There are a number of waivers, which the applicant has requested in order to construct this two lot or, or to construct this way to create two buildable lots. I can go over those individually, but we feel that they're appropriate given the, the size and the scope and scale of the project. And I'll say lastly that we did get some initial feedback from the board's peer reviewer, just some general comments and questions, which we've responded to. And we are awaiting a second round of review comments. And the holdup right now is we're in the process of preparing and submitting the stormwater management permit. I think initially, the thought was we request a waiver from, from the stormwater management permit, which the board is allowed to grant. However, I think after discussing with the board, excuse me, the planner and the peer reviewer, we're going to prepare that application and submit that, that permit. We are, we do fall under the Tier 2 category, which is slightly less intensive than the Tier 1. So we have checked a few of the boxes, including the recharge trench and the drywall, which we've just described. And again, the waivers are requesting, we feel are appropriate, again, given the size and the scale of the project. The roadway is, it's anticipated that it will have remained a private way, so will not be accepted as a public way, which again, making some of those waivers is that much more reasonable. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions. And the applicant is on this call as well this evening. If he has any questions, he can answer.
Okay, Dennis, thank you for the comments. Yeah, I do think we'll, we'll get into the, the waivers and whatnot. There are, well, clearly, I have a couple of concerns on the waivers specifically. But I think we will, and I'm pleased to hear that you're looking to prepare the stormwater calculations. That was not going to be acceptable as a waiver to the board, in my view. We have passed more stringent stormwater regulations recently in town, and several other homeowners have had to comply. And we would expect compliance here as well. The, yes, Anne.
Brad, I have a question, especially for those who aren't familiar, but for everyone in attendance. If the applicant could describe some of the basic zoning requirements. For instance, I'm particularly interested in frontage. What frontage comes from one lot? What comes from the other? What the total is and so forth? I think that may make up part of the waiver, so I'd like to, to see how far they are from complying with the requirements.
So the, there's no waiver requested for frontage? So the, the frontage is, I'm going to try to highlight my screen. Just, again, there's, we've created a, I'm going to go to the, a different plan, so I can't color it up.
I was talking about the frontage along River Road. The, the lot frontage.
Okay, so the lot frontage along, okay. So the, the frontage along River Road is currently, is going to be comprised of two separate lots. So we have the frontage for 171, excuse me, 125, which is on the left here.
Yeah.
And then the frontage for 171, which is here. So I think that's what you're referring to, is the, the total frontage of the.
No, no, I'm talking about the, you're, you're basically creating, you're moving, you're changing the frontage of the 171 lot, reducing it to some degree. And the piece that you're using to access these two new parcels, I'm interested in what that, it's 37, 46, 44, something like that?
It's 37, 47.
Feet, it looks like, running feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess where's the, where's the other frontage coming from?
Yeah.
The frontage for, the frontage for the lot is, so essentially, what they're doing is 171 and 125 are combining their parcels. And then they're going to create the two new buildable lots. 171 will have a new building line. So this, this dash line here is the current lot line that divides 125 and 171. So there'll be a portion of the land that will be taken from 171, which will include a portion of Lot 2 and a portion of the right-of-way. So 171 will be losing, again, a, a small, a small portion here and a small portion here.
So what's the width, which will be the new River Road frontage on this particular part of 125, into which you're going to put this River Road?
So the, the 125 will have, will, will continue to have frontage. I apologize, I'm going to go back to my.
Right, right. I'm not worried about on the westerly portion. I'm just talking about how much River Road frontage is there on the easterly portion of this new configuration, where the road is going to go?
On the new configuration, okay. So this portion here is 37.44 feet for this, which will be Lot 1.
Right.
And the frontage for Lot 1 will actually be on this.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I understand. I understand the frontage for Lot 1. I just want to know what the width of, of, of the River Road dimension is from the westerly abutter there to 171, the new 171 line?
From here.
And the offsets from the property line for this road?
This from here to here.
All of it. There's a new lot line, right? Is the new lot line also the right-hand side of the right-of-way? If another board member can help me explain this better, please jump in.
So we, I think that we need to know where the new lot line is for 171 River Road. So, and then everything to the west of that would be considered the frontage for this.
Right.
The new frontage for the River Road.
This is the new lot line for 171.
Yeah, okay. But just along River Road. So what's, where does the dimension, yeah, I get that. I only care about the part where the road's going. So I'm just trying to read the numbers. 37, 46, and 44? Is that about it, more or less? So what's that at up to, 80? We talked about 150 feet? Is that what we're aiming to achieve here? Or what's the number?
This isn't the, so this is the, this is going to be the right-of-way. So this is actually creating a, creating a right-of-way.
Are you creating frontage on the private driveway?
We are.
Do all three lots have, does each lot have River Road frontage?
No.
No, no, no.
171 will have its legal frontage on a River Road. Lots 1 and 2 will have their legal frontage along this new pri, along this new road, this new right-of-way we're creating.
And how long is that road going to be? That right-of-way?
How long, how much frontage they have? Or how long will the right-of-way be?
I'm just trying to estimate how long it is.
I'll go to the profile and give you a better idea. So it's going to be approximately 480 feet.
But it's a private way, not a road.
It will provide legal frontage for the two lots, and it will remain a private way.
Is that true? Does it automatically, you can use a private way as legal road frontage? I haven't been on the board long enough to know.
Yes.
Just go back to the entrance at the River Road. I still, I'm still confused about frontage. Okay, so are you, are you requesting a waiver? Because I'm only coming up with like 127 feet. Adding the numbers up there, you know, the 37, the 46, and the 44.
Right.
Is there a?
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
So this, this is a, I, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the board's question. So this is a right.
Well, I did, I think the point is, if I may, they would, if you don't have adequate frontage for the lot that's being subdivided, as I understand it, you have to seek a waiver.
Correct.
Okay, so we are requesting a waiver under Section 4.2.4.9. So the, and for that exact reason. But we're saying that when, when we combine the two parcels, 125 and 171, we have more than the adequate frontage here.
But.
But not for the.
But not for 125.
Right, but this is a, this is the combined project for 125 and 171.
Well, you can only count, you can't double dip. It's going to only count for one or the other. All right, anyway, I'll, I'll let others speak to this.
I had difficulty deciphering where the bond was. So now I understand that, you know, it's, it's to the right of, you know, where the roadway would be there for frontage purposes.
Well, that's the existing, correct? What you just.
Yeah, that's the existing lot line.
That's the existing line, correct.
That's the existing lot line.
So it's actually less than 100 and?
No, it's like 127, I guess.
But I was counting the full 44.
Yeah.
44.
If you add up all three of those.
Yeah.
Yes, it's 127, right.
127, that's what I got.
And the, and so the, otherwise, the frontage requirement for this zone, I think, is 200 feet.
Yeah, it's 200, correct.
Okay.
And what are the lot dimensions? They're, they're all, they're, I mean, if your total that you're developing is only 2.75 acres, if you have a reduced frontage lot, you need to increase the size of the lot. Does that, does this?
The total, the total disturbed area. So the, the area within, the total area within the limit of work here.
Yeah, but this is not a reduced frontage.
It's not reduced frontage. There's a waiver that addresses this, I think.
Yeah, he's looking for a waiver on this.
Yeah, there was something about if applicable.
That's why I was a little confused when I saw the communication come over. So I was just trying to figure out if there was a waiver being requested for the frontage. But now I understand there is. Okay.
Interesting, okay.
May I ask, where the, where's the driveway for the existing house? Will that use the same roadway? Is there only one street opening now? It's going to serve all three properties?
So the existing driveway for 171 will be reconfigured to, to connect to this new private way.
And is that, is that essentially where, oh, it, it curves off at the beginning? Oh, I see, I see.
Currently, yeah, currently, it's exiting right here. This was done in an effort to, to again, to, to separate this 171 from, from this new development.
So it comes in at the same spot, but turns off immediately?
Correct.
Thank you.
Did you just confirm the width of the roadway? Again, I see 18 feet. I thought somewhere there was, was it the area over the wetland was reduced?
It does, it does get pinched down at the wetland crossing.
Okay.
And since we are crossing and impacting a wetland, the, the language in the Welling Protection Act says that it shall be the minimum width allowed by the planning board. So we are, we are proposing to reduce the width to limit the impacts to the wetland at this point.
Is there a culvert for there?
Yes, there is a 30-inch RCP culvert that will allow for the continued flow of water through this wetland, go through the culvert. And there's actually an 8-inch corrugated plastic pipe that currently is connecting this wetland to a further downstream wetland.
The infiltration trench, empty?
I'm sorry?
The infiltration trench that you mentioned, it's along the roadway. Where, where is that discharged to?
So the infiltration trench will continue down the road. We are creating a smaller kind of ponding area, settling area at the bottom of River Road.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's a comment on our, on our DPW. We'll, we'll get to those in a moment. Is the roadway that you're proposing, is this paved or is it gravel? Or what, what, what's, what's going on?
It, it will be paved. So we are using the, the standard detail in the regulations. However, we're just modifying it to, to reduce the width.
Okay, we can come back to that, too. And I have no problem with the width on that.
Has the fire truck weighed in on safety and fire trucks on this 480-foot private way?
We have not received feedback from the fire department.
We, we, yes, the board has received feedback. Let me just get it. So I think that there were not any from DPW. I will, so give me one moment, and I'll tell you who we've heard from. I think I've put them in the, in your packet. But if not, I'm happy to share.
Yeah, I think we should all see both of those. So we're going to talk about this. I think I only, I think we've only had the two, at least that I've seen, from DPW and Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah.
Yeah, those were sent along today, I think.
The building inspector had no comments. Police and Fire. Police and Fire noted this section of town does not have access to municipal water, has inhydrants, and access to the river is not an option for drafting water. This certainly increases the complexities with firefighting or operations, but is not unusual for West Newbury. The location of the cistern and turnaround on the supplied plans look great and would support fire department water supply operations. I would be open to following up with the board and owner engineering team to answer any questions.
That's for.
That was from Michael Dwyer.
Thank you.
Yes, you have Board of Health reviews, DPW review. Yes, which one would you like? The, the one from?
DPW is shorter, we can go with that.
Yes, okay. All right. Let me see if I can share. So this is, can you all see this?
Yes, yes.
This is from Highway Superintendent Tree Warden, interim DPW.
So he's questioning the, the, it's not 8 foot, 8 inch, I believe, diameter, crushed stone settling pool? Maybe it isn't, oh, it's 8 foot, the circle, is that right? Dennis?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's 8 foot, okay. My mistake. So that's, that's a question for you to respond to. You don't have to respond tonight. That'll probably come up from our Meridian Associates. And a significant concern is the sight line that we, we have here, which it probably will lend us into discussing a site walk for the board. You know, board members, if you've driven down there from time to time, it, there's a little hill and it's limited or, it's just, it's very limited sight distance. So that's something for us to take a look at. Okay, can you put up the health department?
I certainly can.
So why don't you go ahead, Sue, and read this?
Sure. This is from the health agent. I have received and reviewed the submitted definitive subdivision plan set. Have the following preliminary comments. And I would point out that Paul is, our agent is here on tonight, as he will be for each of our meetings because of the review of the stormwater management permit. So no official soil testing has been conducted for septic systems or stormwater structures. The proposed septic locations are located within the 100-foot buffer zone. Thus, pretreatment will be required pursuant to the local Board of Health's septic regulations. A stormwater permit is needed for the project. Depending on the depth to groundwater, there may be substantial fill needed around the septic systems. This may require grading easements and/or relocation of the erosion control barriers. It is highly recommended to conduct soil testing on the existing property of 171 River Road to verify adequate soils for a future replacement of the existing septic system. The construction asks, for the construction of replication areas, 2 and 3 should be provided, and erosion controls revised as needed.
Okay.
Excuse, I, I also note that the site of one of the septic systems looked to be very close to the westerly lot line of the next property. I don't know if there are setbacks for septic systems, but it looked like it was practically on the lot line. I realize these are preliminary. If you haven't done your. I realize these are preliminary, if you haven't done your soil system testing yet, but.
I, so maybe the limit of work, not not a property line.
Just, is this Paul Sivigni, I presume?
No, that was Dennis.
That was Dennis, I'm sorry. Okay, just just it wasn't clear to me. All right.
And then I put up the conservation commissions as as the applicant's engineers noticed that they have they have filed, and that meeting is open and ongoing, that review.
Okay. So Dennis, what, when do you plan to do the the septic perks and work of that sort?
I I believe the plan of the applicant was to wait and do those testing pending approval or something close to an approval from the conservation commission and the planning board. We have had the discussion. I know that there's, there are two separate lots that will be buildable and that those two individuals are on separate timelines as far as when they're going to build. So we could potentially do a a part test for one, but not the other. I I think one builder or one owner may be closer than the other.
We, to to my knowledge, we typically have all that information before approvals are completed. Am I mistaken in that? Other members?
I would just say that there seems to be a certain amount of risk involved in going through the process of creating a lot, which may not be usable.
Yeah, I think that, to me, the commentary about certain things may need to be moved or graded and easements. I'm not sure I want to go and approve a subdivision application and lot lines and then have things changed. So I think, you know, I I'm scared, I I'm certainly would not would not be interested in a waiver of 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 that and but I think that's something that is going to garner some further discussion. I, it doesn't really appropriate just at this point for to hear from David Kelly at Meridian, some commentary.
Good evening, David Kelly, Meridian Associates. I talked to Dennis before the holiday break and gave a quick once-over on the the plan set and the application material just as a a gut check, kind of see what was going on with the plans and made some minor comments to some pretty straightforward stuff without really going through the regulations at that point, just looking at the plans. And there was nothing that really jumped out at me that was like a deal breaker type of a design flaw or a waiver request that, you know, if if not granted, would, you know, prevent the entire project from happening. I didn't see anything like that. As of now, I'm in the process of going through and doing a detailed review against the subdivision regulations. And there are several items that they are asking for waivers for. Some of them tie into the local stormwater management permit. So I'm waiting to receive that in order to complete the detailed stormwater review. Couple of things that I have that I did notice, and Brian, thanks for bringing that up on the the site distance. They are requesting that waiver and I think it was Tim who brought it up, the location of that bush in the utility pole. On the plan, they have showed the site distance from a parked vehicle, you know, which should be in the location where a vehicle would stop. And then the triangle is going out from there, and it does appear going east that there is a distance of 125, 150 feet. Dennis, I don't remember off the top of my head. And then looking westerly of a much larger distance, but to unless that bush is either removed or perfectly maintained, or the car is in the exact same spot, that utility pole does potentially provide a conflict. So I think having a site visit to look at that one issue specifically would be would be key. Again, though, we all got to keep in mind that this is, this really is a driveway. I mean, it's it's, it is three houses using it, but we've we've looked at projects that are have three or four units coming off of them that have had similar site distance issues that have much higher traffic use. They've been multifamily houses. And, you know, we've we've put stipulations in there that certain areas of the land to the east or the west of the entrance should be, you know, cleared of vegetation and maintained as part of this association or whatnot, because there has to be, I'm assuming there's going to be some sort of association formed for this that's going to maintain the stormwater devices, things like that. So this would be another, another item on there. But all in all, it 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 looks like it's been well thought out and I again, I didn't see anything in here that made me pump the brakes and say, hold on, let's let's holistically start over from the beginning.
Right, good, okay. All right, thank you, David. Board members want to have any questions for David? Or I don't know if you had anything else to add, actually, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, the when you look at the waiver list, it does look long, but there are, like, they did a very detailed list, like, one of the waivers is a waiver from the water water system regulations. There's no town law out here, so you have to technically have to ask for the waiver. It it a lot of things like that. And then once you get into the design of the roadway, since, you know, if you're you're going for a smaller width without sidewalks, without trees, without streetlights, once you start adding all that together, there's probably six or seven of the waivers that are all just based on that. So it's not a tremendously long waiver list. They all seem relatively reasonable. Test pits, stormwater are the two that I'm still a little hung up on myself, but that's that's where I that's where I stand right now.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members want to chat? Question on any of those at the moment?
Necessarily have a question on that, Brian. If I could, I was just wondering, what's the maximum grade of this private road? What would it be?
6%.
Okay. And it looks like it's kind of variable. There's a hill kind of right at the beginning, and then there's a lower area, and then it goes up again towards where the houses are above the wetland area.
So kind of based on my my look at the profile, it's pretty much all in fill. Comes up at 6%, cuts out a little. The top of a knoll continues in fill and meets back up with the existing grade at the end of the roundabout.
Okay. And just for background, this is Chapter 61 forestry, when I think classified now. I don't know. That doesn't really make any difference from a planning board perspective, but that's my understanding. Is that correct?
Dennis?
Yes, that is correct. Portions of the land are in that chapter, chapter. Yeah, it was forestry. They had a cutting permit.
And then the other thing that I couldn't just figure out was the application of the Rivers Protection Act and the 200 feet of the protected area. Is that within any of this construction area for the roadway or no?
Yes, there's a, the portion of the 200-foot riverfront area does extend to the front of the lot. I can pull my screen back up. If the board is.
Yes.
Interesting seeing that. So the 200-foot riverfront does extend. So we had the bank of the river flagged by the wetland biologist. So the 200-foot riverfront area is actually this line here.
Oh, okay.
So we are, we are doing some work within the riverfront area. So the conservation commissioners are doing that as well.
Got it, okay.
I figured that out on the map. So thanks for pointing that out.
Okay. And Deb, questions before I see if any members of the public wish to speak? Okay. So if there are members of the public who have some comments on this at at this time, knowing that there will be future hearing, this will be continued. But if you could either just speak up, identify who you are, we'll we'll take your questions.
Yeah, hi, it's Patricia Reiser.
Yes, hello, Patricia. How are you?
I'm good. Happy New Year.
Same to you. Go ahead.
I I missed the very, very beginning, so maybe I missed the answer to this question, but it's a large parcel, and I'm curious where the lot line is as between the two new lots that are created and how the balance of the parcel is shared by those two lots.
Go ahead, Dennis.
You're muted, Dennis.
Muted.
I apologize. I will share my screen again. I think the aerial might be the best way to. So the 125 will continue to exist cut off there. Then 171 changed by
You could use a darker color. That yellow is a little tough to see.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a magenta. So the 171, which is this house here, their new lot line will do something like this and then continue out to the back. 125 will something like that. And then again, continue for the remainder of the parcel out to the back. And then Lot 1 will be this lot here going out to River Road. And then Lot 2 will be this smaller lot here.
Thanks.
So so I I think that answered your question. I mean, that's the bulk of the parcel in the rear appears to remain as is.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Is that a potentially future developable lot? It looks like it has additional frontage, right?
125 will continue to access River Road where it currently does. You can see the driveway going up and connecting to River Road. So the existing house and outstructures of 125 River Road will continue access from from the existing driveway.
Okay.
Are there, are there trails that cross this property? There used to be a whole network of trails that went up to Long Hill Orchard. Has any conversation taken place about devoting any of this land, protecting it or conserving it, putting conservation restrictions or trail easements?
Are you talking about the new parcels or the old parcels? Like the existing parcel? All the, all the trails are in the back, set off the road. So
Yeah.
where the development, where the two houses will go, there are no trails. It's it's a thinly wooded area. All the trails are, if you can see on the map where kind of you can see where the grade goes up and it kind of goes up a hill, that's where all the trails are. It kind of connects all the the properties along River Road.
Right.
So none of those will be affected.
Did you say they will or will not be affected?
They won't be affected.
Michael, would you, would you be prepared to grant an easement or something to protect the trails so that they can be kept in perpet- in perpetuity?
No, no, it it will remain exactly the way that it is for for right now. You know, it's my mother's property, so when she decides what she wants to do with it, that's but yeah, we wouldn't change how it's set up right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure who is speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael Fusco?
Okay, just it's helpful for the when the minutes are done. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public at this juncture?
My name is Jack Haley. I'm in Abutter at 175 River Road.
Yes, hi, Jack. Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in on the meeting and listen to the discussion. I don't have any questions at this point in time.
Okay, no, no, that's, I'm I'm glad you're with us and thank you. When when you do, just either wave or chime in, that that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we, can we, Dennis, can you back the screen out? Thank you. So I do think we we should look at a a site walk. And I know Ray is not here. Tim, do you, do you have a preference? Is there, is there a are you a weekend only now? I'm not sure of your work schedule.
Well, I'm in like three days, but it's flexible, you know, which days, just not a Wednesday, you know, but the weekends are fine, too.
Other members, do you have a preference during the week? I'm I'm reasonably available, but, you know, maybe most most days.
I am, too.
We know that Deb's going away at a certain point, though.
I was just going to ask, when when is that, Deb?
The 14th.
The 14th? Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm away from the 11th and then the entire following week. So it would have to be, if we if we all wanted to do it sooner, it would have to be like next, you know.
This weekend.
That's not good for me.
I believe there's a snowstorm coming Saturday.
Saturday, yeah, Saturday, perhaps, perhaps, would we? Perhaps, yeah. Or a, you know, Monday, Tuesday, or or Wednesday.
No, Tim said Wednesdays weren't good for him.
Wednesday, that's right.
Brian, can I just ask, are we, are we trying to do this before the next meeting on the 16th?
No, I'm going to think.
We're not going to have the calculations and stuff by then anyway. We could do it after you're back from your.
Yeah, I, no, I I was going to suggest that we we're going to push this to February 6th anyway. That that takes some pressure off of all the calculations and whatnot, so, no.
We could do it later.
Yeah, Deb, do you expect to be back the?
The 29th.
You're back on the 29th? Well, we could give you a few days, get the jet lag out of your system.
Whatever works for you guys. I can, I can.
Is, 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 yeah, I, it's, you know, I I'm flexible. We could do it, you know, a February, Thursday, Friday, that's the first, second, or the third, which is Saturday. Any preference with people?
Those are all fine with me. This is going to be board members only, or how?
No, any members of the public that might wish to come out there as well.
Because I'm thinking about consultants. If that were the case, that might be better during the week, but it may not be necessary.
I, yeah.
I'll I'll be there when I have to be.
Yeah, I I'm not sure he would need, David would need to be there.
Okay.
Do you think, if you think it'd be advisable?
I didn't know what you had in mind.
No. I think it's the, I think the site distance thing is, I mean, we've we've seen this, done this before. So, you know, my inclination, let's, and and it keeps the option open if David wants to get up there, is is the first or second. Should we just go with the the?
The day works for me, Brian.
You either one, Tim?
Yep.
Me, too.
Yeah, let's go, go with Fri- Friday, the 2nd. 11 o'clock?
Sure.
It'll warm up to whatever it's going to be.
Yes. Brian, Brian?
Yes.
Right. Do you need anything flagged or any particular items flagged or marked for that visit? The location of the proposed road or center lines?
Are things flagged out there at the point, at this point?
Probably will.
David or or Dennis?
We have the center line of the roadway staked as it comes off of River Road. We have the center line of the roadway staked as it comes off of River Road. Um, and we have a few other stakes out there that are more control or traverse points, but we can. We can probably use them to kind of orient ourselves on the site.
I, I, I think that'd be fine.
And would Dennis be there?
Yes. We, we would hope so.
Yes, I will, I will be attending.
Okay, so let, let's set that up, um. The, uh, February second, Friday at eleven AM. Um, any other further questions here before I suggest a date or? A date to, uh. For the next, uh, hearing on this. Any other questions? No, hearing none. Um, so our next. Meeting in February, I have February sixth. Is that? Am I correct, Sue? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, February sixth. So let's continue this February sixth at seven o'clock. Okay, um, I move to continue this, uh, this hearing. On, uh, the Eagleness subdivision one twenty-five River Road to seven o'clock on February sixth.
Second.
Um, all the, any discussion? All those in favor, Brian Murphy, I.
You know.
And, uh. For affirmative. And with Ray Cook missing. Okay, all right. Well, that's it, Dennis. Um, you know, we'll, we'll remind you and whatnot, and, and I know you're gonna be in touch with David Kelly on, uh. As, as the stormwater. Uh, calculations progress. He'll be, uh, you know.
I will.
Yes.
And, and you know, whether they're done or not for the, the next meeting, that's fine, but I mean, it, whatever.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dennis. Take care. Okay, everyone. Well, I'm a little behind schedule, but not too far off what I had estimated. Okay, our next item is on the Housing Opportunities Initiative. Uh, otherwise known as the MBTA Communities Act. And, uh, you know, where we. Where we stand with this, um, in case there's a few people that are, are listening hadn't been, uh. Aware, we will. Be submitting the zoning regulations, the draft. The zoning regulations. After we review them tonight, we hope to be able to, uh. Release them, uh, with our consultants to the state. The state requires a review. Ahead of time. Um. Uh, pending, uh, the town meeting in late April. Um. They asked for a ninety-day window. Hopefully, uh, it will take less time than that for them to review it and, uh. We're, we're eagerly await, we will await their commentary back to us. Um. At this point, the consultants have indicated they can submit both parcels that have been, um. Um. Kind of, uh, the considered ones that, uh, we have worked with, uh, the Dunn parcel and the NAP parcel. Um. And it's my recommendation to the board, you can think about this as we just go through the regulations again, that, uh. We've, in future meetings, particularly next week, next meeting this month, that, you know, we, we develop, uh, some criteria in looking at both parcels. In case we do decide to recommend one parcel versus the two for town meeting. I know we had all kind of talked that through and. Think we're all feeling that perhaps one will be, uh, um. Hopefully more appropriate or palatable to town meeting. But, uh, I do think we should look at, at the, the pros and cons of both, and this, this will probably help us make a decision. Probably helpful for the folks at town meeting as well to know that, that's how we looked at, at these. So, um. Having said that, um, Sue, if you could put up. I don't know which one would be easier. The, the, the ones that had your questions were very helpful and the comments are back. Maybe that's a, a good one to, to, to start with.
Okay, let me find those.
Maybe one more, there you go.
One, a little larger or?
No.
Yeah.
No, okay.
It's okay for me, but.
Better.
So, yeah, okay, that's fine. Um, so why don't you, uh, scroll down till we get some first comments? And we, we've been looking at these, um. For, uh, several meetings now and have made some iterative changes and, uh. So we hope we're, we're at a point where we feel comfortable in submitting them.
Yes, and the newest, um, changes that weren't in there.
One, one sec, cause you, we should explain, you have items in blue and yellow, so.
Yep, the blue is, um, what has been added by our consultants. And then if you'll, the yellow was, they're just calling out and making sure that we have the right sections. Um, so they, that stays highlighted, but then the questions you'll see on the side.
Right, that we came up with at the last meeting.
Right.
Okay. And why don't you just?
So the question was, yeah, the question was about the buffer zone around the wetlands. Um, and if, as Dodson and Flinker points out, this definition comes from the compliance guidelines, so that's why it's in there. The title buffer. Five buff, title five buffers, fifty feet local wetlands and riverfront buffers resources.
Uh, yeah, I say, I. I think it implies, correct, that their answer that. Local regs would still apply?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. So I think, so what, what this pertains to is excluded land. So when we put in a parcel and say. Um, you know, this is the parcel. If it has any of these, the things within it, those are excluded from the calculation. So if we say we've got. Eight acres and three acres are wetland resources. According to this definition, we couldn't count that. So this is just explaining what. You know, what would be excluded from the land. So there's a number of those.
I, I probably should say that, you know, there's, there's, I know there's a couple, there's, uh, Wendy Reed and Angus are here. If. You have a question, just, we should just speak up here, okay?
So this is just their explanation that, um, three A U S is the term residential dwelling unit. Our common term is dwelling unit, so. It's just suggesting we use. We should point out that they're both. Anyone wants? Okay. So I know what the board struggled with last time is trying to make it very clear whether when we're talking about. The entire district, the known as the McMod district. Um, or when we're talking about potential lots that may be divided or created within that district. So this is the work that they've. Tried to. To do around that issue, and then they've also added, um. Graphics images to, um, help explain what the. What they're referring to.
Yeah, I, I actually found that very helpful. Myself.
Exactly.
Visual person, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Sue, would you just remind everybody what M C M O D, um, what that, what that's? What the words are?
Sure, the, so the Mc, McMod is, um. Oh, sorry, now I've gone, I've gone blank. It's the MBTA. That's the M, Communities. And Mc, um, multi-family overlay district, so.
Yeah, it's.
The Mc is the.
You can't get better acronyms than that, huh?
Returning, referring to MBTA communities, just to kinda give it a. And that, you know, we can change, but that's just what they came up with, the McMod.
Yeah, yeah. I, I read through it many times, but I never saw the definition and, um, that all makes sense.
Got it.
Are, are, are we going with the forty-five foot high, um, dimension? Or I see it's, there's sort of. Uh, yeah, question there.
Yes, so that was a question. Um. Dodson and Flinker has, had looked at to see that we allow three stories. Um, and they said because of the pitch of the buildings, um, being allowed at that steeper pitch to be consistent with what you see. Um. In this area, um, that you might wanna consider a higher height allowance to allow a full three-story building. Um. Said, you know, if not, um. They would recommend no less than forty to allow the three feet, but they would. Suggested that a four-foot or the forty-five feet would be more reasonable.
Just on that point, I think they had done some kind of survey, Sue, thing to arrive at the thirty-five feet. I think they had like. You know, considered what the constructed homes were along Main Street particularly, right? I think so. They originally came up with thirty-five.
So thirty-five is our, is your height, current height, yes?
Yeah, that's normal for just about all the towns in the state.
Right, yes. Um, but then they've, again, they said, but we also are allowing three stories to accommodate some of these building types, and they thought. That because of the, in order to get three full stories, you'd need more than typically thirty-five feet. Cause a thirty-five feet is more typical, two and a half story. So.
It's between really thirty-five and forty-five, or are they saying you really need forty-five?
They're suggesting forty-five would be most reasonable, um, but if, but. You know, it's certainly up to the board to, to decide, but that's their recommendation.
Yeah, it would be, uh, Tim, they're suggesting one number, it, it, it goes in as forty-five.
Yeah, no, I didn't. Now, if we had some discretion, you know, that we wanna consider make it, you know, be forty, you know? Forty-five's pretty tall, but I can understand why they're doing it with the pitch roof.
Well, could you get a full third story? In a forty-foot building? There, there are a lot of. You know, everything on High Street in Newburyport is three-story. And sometimes that top floor is an eight-foot ceiling or, you know, a little bit lower. Um, I'm. I know we have developers online. I don't, I'd love to get their opinion of what you need to get three full stories.
I think we should go with the forty-five, but, um. And?
Yeah, it's sort of either that or allow flat roofs.
Yeah.
Well, just, just a quick note, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the building height definition refers to the measured point of the height being. Uh, the midpoint between the eaves and the ridge of a peaked roof. So.
It'd be forty.
Seems like forty would still allow. Um, I mean, Dodson and Flinker, they're the architects, so, uh, but. You know, that's something that comes up quite a lot in different zoning is, is exactly how you measure height.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, cause some of them, it's actually the, the top of the pitch, but in this case, it's the midpoint, which is, which is not unusual.
Then that should be four.
Yeah, it would seem that that would allow forty to still comfortably accommodate a, a three-story building.
Can we confirm that about the definition of the height, though? About where it's measured?
Yes, that was just back here.
Just missed that going by.
Yeah. It wasn't a change, so I didn't stop, but I did see.
That's on page five, yeah.
My. There you go.
Height. Yeah, the midpoint, so yeah. Yeah, that's forty-five. This thing's gonna get really gigantic.
The eaves and the ridge of a peaked roof or the top of the structure. Of the highest roof beams on a flat roof. We don't want flat roofs.
No, no.
Yeah, but if it's forty-five to the midpoint, I take Angus's point. It's gonna end up being fifty-two or some.
Right, yeah, no, it should be forty.
So we think it should go back to forty?
I do.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it ever.
Yep.
May I, may I ask a question?
Good, hi, John.
And this is, uh.
This is John Sarkis.
Thank you, John.
Uh, my, my suggestion would be to get a design of a building, uh, that produces affordable housing. And has a depth to it. You know, the height of the building is very much related to the depth of it. And wi- without having, having that in hand right now, you really can't answer this question as to whether or not thirty-five, forty or forty-five is enough. So, uh, that would be my suggestion is, is, you know, some hypothetical design showing an intelligent unit. On either side of maybe a hallway. And, and, uh, you know, getting a sense of whether or not you can really do it with three stories. And, and that depth.
Well.
How would you, how would you word this differently, John, in, in this particular example?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't have the answer. I would look first, I would look first to see if, uh. If, uh, a building can really be built that way intelligently. You know, like get a design of a building that is essentially what, what these diagrams are showing. For example, that building that's shown on the top of that screen is narrow. I- is narrow and tall. You know, that's not likely the way one would design a, a, a building. Right here, right now. Uh, you'd probably, it'd probably be double the width as you see there proportionally. And, uh. And therefore the roof would come up higher at this, if you have a. The same pitched roof. So to economically design a building, you typically need units on both sides of a center hall.
Mm-hmm.
And they typically run, you know, twenty-some-odd, thirty-some-odd feet deep. Um. So two of them plus a seven or eight-foot hall. You get a sense of what, yeah, you get a sense of what you really need then, and then you could do the, the geometry to see if it, if it really works. But if, if, if the, if the goal is to really not have anything that's. So much taller than the, the rest of what we're used to in town. I, I, I would say, you know, put a number of forty-five on it and. As a result, or, or thirty-five or whatever you deem necessary, and then you won't get buildings with. Units on both sides of a hall. You might just get townhouses instead.
Hmm.
Or other designs.
Mm-hmm. It seems to me that continuing on, there are other examples of houses where they did divide them into units, Sue. Isn't that true?
Um, there, there are a, a number of graphics that show different layouts, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's, it sounds to me as if, if we backed off to the forty feet, the other members would feel more comfortable. And, uh. You know, I, we, we, and I appreciate John's comment, but, you know. And I, I have to presume that they've modeled this. Um, perhaps not in, in the manner that John spoke of. But perhaps more a single, a townhouse type of unit, not double-loaded.
I'm not sure. To, to what degree they did that modeling. I think these diagrams are very schematic. Just, uh, you know, wire diagrams, if you will, to illustrate these dimensions. I don't think they're meant. To particularly replicate the proportions of actual buildings.
Yeah. Are you, so are you comfortable doing forty feet?
Uh, it's so theoretical. I mean, in some ways I, I can just see leaving it at thirty-five, which is what everything else is in town.
Yeah.
But we've never built apartment buildings before.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know that we're gonna get apartment buildings, you know, I mean.
I hope we are.
Well, then they'll have to be single-loaded or they'll have to be townhouses or they'll have to be.
I, I, I. I, it feels to me like we should do the 40 feet, and...
I'm with you, Brian. And, you know, I'd confirm that with Dodson and Flinker, you know? Yeah, which someone had, I don't know if it's yourself, or someone had that good suggestion. Just to point that definition out to them.
Sue, you have a note on that?
I do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on.
And thanks to the town manager for going back in his career and bringing up that good input.
Yep.
John?
So Dodson and Flinker, we, as I mentioned, we wondered what to call things. They suggested development site. Land area encompassed in a development proposal. So... Term in the, in the definition. That's an old one. They were working on those, and now you can see them in there.
Yes.
So here's some diagrams for attached buildings and showing front, side, rear, setback, frontage. And they've labeled each one, so it's pretty easy to understand what they're talking about. Let me know if you want anything slowed down. So they did add this piece, the gross density calculation, simply because, he said it was added due to results from the compliance model. This was their, they were rounding down, and they found that when they did that, we couldn't meet the compliance model with the size of the lot that we were showing. So they, so they rounded up. And then it works.
Okay, and we know the state's going to, the state is going to review this and make their own comments and...
Yes.
Suggestions.
Yes. And I should note, just to Brian, that the, the state review is an optional review. It's our option to review it. But if we do opt to do it, which is, I think, a good idea, and we've all agreed it's a good idea, they do ask for 90 days prior to the vote, but it is an optional review. We, this is a change. We had them take that additional language out of there.
This is, you want to talk through this about the subdivision?
Yeah, so he was talking here about the subdivision. We assumed that if anything was done under the MIC mod regulations, that then it wouldn't need anything, wouldn't need subdivision approval. And he, they concur. And said if you're okay with the changes they made in the previous version, that would be okay.
So, so do we get things like, you know, drainage calculations and all that stuff? We don't ask for...
So you can, you can still have, he's still put in all of this type of language? Yeah, in your site plan review, you can still do it, but it doesn't need to be...
The same standard?
Right. Again, most of the changes were the illustrations showing how to, how it would be divided and...
It'll be very interesting if they say we've done a great, hopefully they say we've done a great job.
They made the changes as we suggested to the slope of the roofs.
Yes. We spoke a lot about that.
And I think that is the end of our discussion on recommended changes.
Okay.
Will I stop sharing? And leave it up and, okay?
Well...
Oops.
Always easy to...
I can bring it back if people have specific questions.
Yeah, let's stick with this. We, we don't, you know, yes, I think we totally need to submit this, you know? We don't know if they'll like all of it, part of it, none of it. We know they'll like some of it. And, and yes, some of this, it's a guess. It's a guess for all the towns that are undergoing this process as we speak. So, you know, there's, there's always the error of waiting until one thinks everything is perfect and missing an opportunity for corrective action or whatnot. I'm certainly hopeful that they do not take the full 90 days, but I think it's a step we need to take. Are the other board members feeling comfortable that, yes, we were in a position to submit what we have? And we've struggled, you know, from day one when we first saw this, probably back in October? And I think we've come up with a pretty good sense. There's a lot of stuff in there.
I have a question, Brian. Typically, as a board, one of the things we've done is to try to make revisions to bylaws, you know, change language, and it's been sort of a point of pride that we let folks in town know that we are willing to do that. And if something doesn't work out, we will make changes in the future. Do we have the same latitude with this, given that it's a mandate? How's that going to work?
It's a good question. I, I'm... I don't know the specific answer to that.
I mean, maybe that if it's mandated is to create the zone with a certain density, then all of this other niceties, if you will, in quotation marks of architectural design and all that are going to be of less interest to the state, and that we would be able to vary those in the future. But no wonder.
Yeah, and not to go too far aside here, but I, taking a look at the Sunday paper two days late, there's a Globe editorial. The 12 communities, the large cities, all submitted on time. And some were frankly overwhelmingly enthusiastic about their changes. And the editorial says, there were a couple that, you know, were not happy, Milton being one. And there's a referendum that Milton may try to do some other changes or something. But all 12 that had to submit did so, and all approved. And there's a slew of, that are coming up in '24. But the gist was, you know, maybe not so bad from the state's perspective of having to, you know, kind of use the club of, you know, grants and monies and all sorts of, and other potential legal action to get something passed that, you know, may or may not get things built as quickly as they'd hoped. But they said this is a, it's a pretty... It was an interesting process up to this point, that the 12 cities have passed. And some were quite happy, enthusiastic to do it. So if you haven't read the editorial, it's on the editorial page, you should do it. Anyway, that's my speech on this. So, I, yes, I, we don't have all the answers, because this is a whole new mandate. And soon as we find out, we will pass it along. And, you know, hopefully that what we've tailored is good for West Newbury. It may not be good for other towns, but I think it's good for West Newbury. Sue, do we think we need to take a vote to submit this, or consensus is adequate?
A consensus is adequate. And I would just ask if the, if the select board is, thinks that they have consensus, that they think this is a good place to submit as well.
Thank you. I was going to go there for it.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 no. Thank you. So Wendy and Angus, I mean, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I sat through the revisions last meeting. I mean, I think the changes have been good. I'm just wondering what you're envisioning in terms of delaying the process of identifying the property. Will that be separate hearings after you get state feedback? Or kind of, how are you thinking about that? We want to have enough time before town meeting, that's all.
Yeah. Well, I'll give, you know, the fact, first of all, I was envisioning that we would have to sit here tonight after looking at the regs and try to make a determination of which one we wanted to submit. But Dodson said they can submit both, you know, land parcels and details. We're not even sure if the state's going to return specific feedback on that. But since they're, they said they would be happy to submit both, I felt that was a positive step. And ideally, the board will take the next couple, three meetings. We work on a matrix, which I'll credit for Sue. She said, why don't you sit? And we'll talk about pros and cons of each site. And, and then also revisit, do we need to come back with one versus two? So that's my thought process. We'll start that at the next meeting. But yes, the idea would certainly be to have something, a decision, one way or the other, whether it's stick with two or one, and why did we get to that one? You know, before, well before town meeting. But that's my opinion. If the board feels otherwise...
Seems like the regulations are separate from the decision about the parcel, I think.
Yeah.
And I'd rather see if the state has any comments.
Great, yep.
Okay.
There's a question in the chat. Did you see that?
Yes, yes, public comment. We certainly could incorporate that Sue also wondered about that. Originally, I had thought we didn't have time, because if we would have to, if we were forced to do this tonight... I'm not sure the format of how we do that, but that certainly could be something that's done in February. Perhaps if it's at a meeting like this, or, you know? I don't think we need Dodson and Flinker to come back out. It's probably not in their contract anyway. For another show and tell. But I'd be, I'd be open to additional public input.
I think the question in the chat may be, are people going to be allowed to speak tonight?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Angus, you have any thoughts yourself?
No, I'm really just here to listen, keep my ear to the ground on this. I was off last week and sick a couple of days before that, so I really haven't had a chance to go through the regs in detail, so I'm just really here to listen.
Okay, good. Well, hope you're doing better. You look good, so.
A week off does wonders.
Well, that's, that's okay. All right. So yes, if there's anyone that wishes to speak tonight, both on regs or where we stand with this, please, just identify yourself.
I'm the one that asked the question, so I guess I'll, I'll be the first one to comment. It, it sounds like, from what you're saying, that the Mullins property is out of your thinking at this point. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm circulating a citizen's petition to basically include the Mullins property as a solution to the MBTA, running this as a 40R district, and essentially authorizing an RFP to be prepared, and, you know, allow the selectmen to dispose of the property to meet both 40R and the MBTA initiative. I didn't want to blindside the board, that's why I came tonight, because I want you to know that that's in the, in the works. So there'd probably, you know, be a competing proposal at town meeting in, in April. Although, I would much rather work with boards, you know, the Planning Board, the Housing Initiative, Affordable Housing Trust, and the Select Board, and have it come from the town as opposed to a citizens' initiative. But I'm prepared to do that. But I just wanted to put that out before, you know, so that you can anticipate that and take what steps you feel you need to take.
Well, I'm disappointed that you, you feel that that is a better solution. We've, we've looked at it, we've talked about it, we've talked about it with you. And, you know, I think you have to do what you feel you need to do. The board, in its discussions and with our consultants, have felt that the Mullin parcel should not be included. And we have two parcels that have been vetted. And, you know, this is always the will of the town. Somebody has a better idea that they want to do something than, you know, that's going to be up to the town. You'll have to convince the people at the meeting to do that. And we'll have to convince them that our proposal is correct.
The biggest objection I had heard from this board and from the consultants was that there was no RFP or anything in process to, you know, to use that as, as an MBTA lot. And, you know, this town meeting warrant article would put that on as an RFP to start the process, so it would get us quite a ways along that path. And the other concern was that the MBTA initiative excludes public land, but there's also an exception to that exclusion that, you know, the public land, if it had been, you know, if it was designed for housing, which this was purchased by the town for affordable housing, that, you know, that meets that exception within the MBTA regulations. You know, the other thing to consider is the MBTA regulations discourage agricultural land, and both of the properties you're looking at are agricultural land. So that's kind of contrary to the MBTA regulations. But in any case, I just want, you know, I don't want to blindside anybody.
No, no, I appreciate it. I do, yeah. No, no, thank you. Board members have any questions? Mr. Baker?
If anyone would like to sign my petition, come by 291 Main Street to my office, and you're welcome to sign.
Well, I, I've always felt that we definitely want to build affordable housing on the Mullin property, but it did not comply with this particular initiative that the state is requiring for the reasons that you stated. That it's not already under consideration for anybody to do anything with. We don't have any developer online. We don't know that it can be developed by anybody in the near future. It would seem to be a timing thing, that both Dunn and Knapp are ready to go and to satisfy the requirements of the initiative. These two were better candidates. Doesn't mean we don't still want to see housing on the Mullin property. But when you're looking for an RFP, that implies that we need to find a developer who would like to build there.
And I would not have gone forward if I did not have one, but I think I have two names of people that are interested in that property. but I think I have two names of people that are interested in that property.
That's encouraging.
No, I was afraid of that as well. Deb, you bring up a good point, and I ran and talked to a number of people before I found one. And then I've since heard of another one that is interested in that property.
Well, the Affordable Housing Trust would very much like you to include us in on that.
Things are moving fast. I'm trying, I will, I'll try to get one of them to talk to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Great. But does this, this is not mutually exclusive, is it?
No, but it could offer the town one or the other, or they could do both.
Right.
Once again, I just want to point out that the MBTA Communities Act is not focused on affordable housing. It's focused on density and housing creation. And so the Affordable Housing Trust may have an interest in doing something on the Mullen property that would be quite distinct from MBTA Communities Act.
But I also think that both can be satisfied with a single development.
Well, I'm not sure how that would work, but at least under the regulations I've read.
I've read them too.
So anyway, no, I appreciate you coming to chat about it and, you know, you never know where things, where the paths diverge and come back across. I'll grant you that.
And I'm happy to come in and make a more extensive presentation if the planning board would like to invite me at some point.
Okay, well, thank you. We may very well do that. All right. Thank you. Sue, do we have any other matters on that, on the topic at hand? Or I will say, let's have a consensus. I'm fine with releasing the zoning regs draft as prepared by Dodson and Flinker without taking a formal vote. Other members in favor of moving forward?
Yes.
Yes, I agree. It's a draft. We need the state's feedback.
Yeah, yes, I also just wanted to weigh in. You know, Mr. Sarkis had a number of concerns about the Dunn property that he put into a letter to us. But if we're not, if at this point, we're still just talking about whether we can focus on one or both of those properties, yes, I would be prepared to go ahead with the understanding that there may be limitations that preclude building on the Dunn property that we haven't, we don't know about. No engineering has been done. There's, we know more about NAP, I think, than Dunn.
Yep, no, no, your comment, I appreciate your comment. That's part of the, I think, the idea why we want to develop a matrix of how the board would view, should we ultimately decide whether the one or the other forward.
Yep.
And that's, my intent would be that we would start that discussion next week, next meeting. That works with everybody, whether, keep us here. We still have a few things to cover tonight. But yes, so start your matrix. And I know you'll probably be away for that, Deb, but if you had comments you wanted to get before, that's fine. But we'll certainly also have it on the agenda for February 6 as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, hearing no other comments on this, and Sue, you're sure we have nothing else we needed to cover on MBTA?
I think we're all set.
I think we are.
For that.
All right. Next item is the Planning Board FY '25 operating budget.
Would you like me to pull the last, pull that up?
Go.
Okay.
Okay, so. You want to walk us through this, Sue?
Oh, sure. Sorry. I was chatting away and muted. And muted at the same time.
Sometimes I should have a sign that gets, you know.
Right. So this is just, I mean, it basically is flat from last year, moved some, a little bit of money around. But as is typical, the effort is to try to keep any increase very modest or better yet, stay the same or shave where you can, as is typical. And I just wanted to say that in addition to the budget, I think it's always good to, and we're always asked to, departments are already asked to look at their, you know, mission and see if that is current. So I know what you have on the website I've pulled up, and maybe we can discuss as well. But just in terms of some things have been done, and you may want to change your focus on some other things. So I think that's part of the conversation as well.
I'd like to look, I have some comments about that, about that other document. But let's look at the numbers since that's what's up here now.
Perfect.
The far right column, I think it's, the heading is supposed to be fiscal year 2025.
Nope.
I don't know if that's, that's the template you were given, or if that's just error that dragged along, but there it is. Anyway.
There you go.
And on the, in the absence of a breakdown on the salary and wage line, are we still, is Caitlin still a shared resource?
So I might defer to others on the line for this. So my understanding is that Caitlin is still providing services for us. But I think that her entire budget is under her new role without knowing the breakout. But I don't know if anyone, Angus, wants to say anything more on that regard.
Yeah, I, without getting into specifics, I would definitely recommend continuing to carry the amount that you have carried for the support role.
So is that in there now? Because it's less than last year.
It is. I think it may have, did it have the minutes?
I don't know.
Taken out, Angus, as part of that?
We can review that together, Sue. I haven't seen this before, so I don't know what's in there and what's not.
Okay.
I know there was a change there at some point during a year last year above that.
As I say, it's hard to know without the breakdown, but I just wanted to, we're covering Sue, or Sue and Caitlin, or Sue and Caitlin and Barbara, or I'll leave that to others to sort out.
All right. I don't see any problems. I know Sue had mentioned that there's, you know, a bit of an increase, a thousand dollars roughly, excuse me, for the newspaper advertising. We pay more to advertise, and we get less news. Somehow, that's a little bit frustrating, but.
Yeah, I think I increased the advertising and decreased some other things, materials and supplies, other things. But because we are putting forth multiple zoning changes, they're pretty expensive each time we do them. So if we're doing them in the fall and the spring, I just want to make sure that we're covered for those. Because I think they're about 500 apiece, so it's pretty quick, or 498 or something. So it's pretty quick to go through a thousand dollars for that.
Okay, it'll be small money. I don't have the new MBTA assessment, but it always goes up a little bit.
I think we see, yeah.
If you need, you know, that number will get plugged in. It's just, it'll be a few hundred dollars, no doubt. Okay, anybody have concern or comments? I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And we'll let Sue work out with Angus the breakdown on the payroll.
Thanks. Sounds good.
Okay, good. And Anne, you had said something about the
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Things we do.
Yeah, the covered letter, sort of document, whatever it's called. It seems like it's the same as it's always been, and I think that's a bit of a red flag. I think we should kind of look at it together.
Sure.
See what's up. The basic mission statement thing, I think, was fine, but there was a sort of a, what the word is, little report about, you know, things we're going to do or something, whatever it's called. We'll see it in a minute.
Pardon me.
Let me see if I can, not that, not that. Let me see if I can find, I wanted you to share the budget process and what we're looking at.
Oh, yes, with fascination. There we go.
I think this is it.
It's the programmatic goals. That's what I want to look at. Specifically, number two, well, number two to start with. I think this is something that we said, you know, four or five or so many years ago. I think the first sentence is fine, and then I think if we want to get specific next sentences, we should update those to talk more about what we are actually doing now, like MBTA Communities or whatever. Sue had a whole laundry list of things in which we are currently engaged and that are sort of on the front burner. This is all new to me. I think it needs to be revisited. I don't know if we want to try to do that as a group here or ask, either look at it or remember. But I would be starting with, continue to the end. It needs to be thought about, updated.
Point well taken. Sue, when is this due?
We certainly have time. It's due, ooh, I had that in previous, January, end of January?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I present my budget on Monday, February 5. But the big thing is, you know, getting the numbers right so I can look at the bottom line. But the narratives and some of those things could come in, you know, late the prior week.
Yeah, we've got a couple of meetings anyway. I just think we ought to update that. Same thing with, on the next one, the business district?
Yeah, I was, yes, I was jumping ahead of you, yes.
I mean, I think, yeah.
It is what it is. It's not going to.
Somehow, maybe two and three can kind of be, not merge, but massaged.
Yeah. You want to take a shot at that, Sue, and see?
I certainly can.
Little creativity update.
And I don't know that we, do we, does Sue pursue grant opportunities, or does that kind of happen elsewhere? I'm not sure. Sounds good, but I'm not sure it's accurate.
I'm always looking.
You're always looking. Okay, you're pursuing, okay.
But it's a matter of capacity. Do we have the capacity to take on any more projects? I've been told that maybe we have our hands full at the moment, but my eyes are always open to those.
We did that previously, you know, when we were looking for a consultant here or there.
Yes. No, I mean, it's fine. It's fine to leave it in. Yeah, or pursue grant opportunities as appropriate or something, you know? I mean, it's not our main thing, right? It's not a thing.
It was actually, I think, pre-planner, when we had a, you know, administrator, you know, Gene or.
That's my updating note, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just think that where we are specific, we ought to be accurately specific.
Thank you, Anne.
I wonder if anyone else will note that things have been updated.
Probably not.
I'll feel better.
No, 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 thank you. That's good. That's very good. Okay, so you can take a shot at that, Sue, with some creativity?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
You have a fresh set of eyes. Yeah, good.
Wait a minute, stop on that page a second, Sue. The Dodson and Flinker, the whole McMud proposal, does that come out of our budget? Is that shown in here anywhere? Those numbers are not in here, right?
No, that's a grant.
That was a grant. Does that, is that revealed to the town anywhere? Does it show up anywhere? And how much did that cost?
So all of that is on, all of it is on the website and was presented at various times. I'm sure when we, when you applied for it, when you received it, when you had to provide a, some additional funds for it, some matching funds for it. So it was actually, I did not write that grant. That was all done before me. I think Angus was the driver of that grant.
Yeah, Leah did, I think, most of the work. She and I worked together on it very closely. The grant was for 75,000, or actually, no, that's, no, the grant was for 67,500. There was a 10% local match. So there was a $7,500 allocation at town meeting right around the same time. So the total project budget is 75,000, most of which was contracted with Dodson and Flinker. But some amount, I think, in the neighborhood of 6,000, give or take, was contracted with the town's water consultant. And Deb, we don't actually have, like, there's not a consistent reporting on the grants that we obtain and allocate. We have, in the finance office, we have a complete spreadsheet with all of that, what the amounts are, what the match is, what the purpose is. But in any given year, we manage between 30 and 40 grants, some of which are major like this one, but some of which are really very, very minor in dollar amount. And while we, you know, I provide updates on that regularly at select board meetings, it's not something that, like, the town report doesn't have like a list of all grants.
Seems like it should.
Okay, what do you want me to not do instead of preparing that report?
No, I just, I just think, you know, everybody in town's paying taxes here. But if we're generating income from other sources, seems like that ought to be something that the town knows about, doesn't it?
I mean, you know, we do, you know, press releases on major ones like the, you know, Middle Street Bridge or the grant that was obtained for the Sawmill Brook property. Actually, just in the span of six weeks this fall, we got almost $2 million in three separate grants. But, you know, it is a bandwidth issue. We don't pat ourselves on the back as often just because honestly, I mean, I'm not exaggerating, like, that means other work won't get done. There are only 24 hours in the day, so we don't have a press office.
Maybe we should.
I'm sure the taxpayers will love that. But no, your point's well taken. We could do more to let people know how much, you know, grant money we get, because it's quite a lot, but.
We definitely should, Angus. I mean, this town is very well run, very well governed. And I think that accomplishments like that are something that ought to be in the town record. We don't read newspapers anymore. Where else is it going to show up, you know?
No, you're right. You're right. It's.
And Angus, you do deserve a pat on the back, so.
Absolutely.
You know, the big dollar amounts are the, actually, the easier ones. It's, and I don't want to trivialize any amount, but, you know, we get grants on the order of $5,000, you know, for certain departments. And, I mean, that all helps, absolutely. But there is a, you know, kind of cost benefit in terms of, I mean, it's basically the time it takes to administer the grant probably uses as much time as the grant. So, and it shifts constantly. I mean, if we had a list, we'd be updating it every second or third week because there's that much grant management activity that goes on. So, but we do have a, we do have a detailed spreadsheet that the town accountant and I put together a couple of years ago. Prior to that, we didn't even have that, so.
Well, share it. Let's share it.
Although I guess an easy fix or a partial accounting would just be to add some format to the projects page that just kept that in a sidebar for each of the major projects in town, because most of those are in a large part funded by grants.
Yeah, many of the major projects have at least some grant funding. No, that's a good suggestion.
Food for thought. Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Angus.
The meeting schedule you have up there, I have suggested changes in July, but
Okay.
Others?
And the only one that was in conflict was the November sixth, well, November five is election day.
Yes, and we know that'll be a problem.
Tuesday, November sixth.
Yeah. I would suggest July two, that's the beginning of the holiday week. Not going to happen. I would say, because there's actually five Tuesdays. I'd suggest the ninth and the twenty-third.
Oh, there you go.
If, unless we wanted to be good to ourselves.
Take a break. That's usually
Well, we should see how busy we are before we make that call. You know, put two in, we can always knock one out later.
We could do that. That'd be fine, too.
Although, we shouldn't wait till the last minute to make a change.
Or did you just want to leave the sixteenth? No, yeah.
Yeah, that kind of splits the difference.
Yeah. Want to just do that as a Yeah, I mean, if we're in the middle of something and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Right, we can always
I, yeah, let's leave the sixteenth.
Okay. Do you typically do the day after the election day? It's November sixth, the following Wednesday instead of the Tuesday. Is that what you typically do? If you have one on a
Yeah, it hasn't happened that often that we have a standard procedure.
That sounds
Election Day is, you said, the fifth?
Yeah, which is the Tuesday.
I mean, I'm fine either one. Wednesday, just stick with Wednesday?
That's better for me, but I don't know how others.
No, no. Let's do that. As we get closer next year, that can, who knows if that has to shift. A little hard total planning then, yeah. Okay.
I will update this accordingly.
Sure. And then, so, I'm sorry, I'll wait for you to finish.
I think that's finished.
Okay. And the next amendment agenda, something that Tim had requested, a discussion of potential projects needing Community Preservation Act funding. Take it away.
Yeah, it's a simple request, so I think the consensus at the the requests coming out of the last meeting for the CPC was that, you know, the different members should go back to their respective organizations and boards and come up with priorities, projects, you know, things that should be brought before the CPC. So I'd like to do that this evening. I don't know if Wendy wants to add anything in particular, but I definitely thought it was a good idea. You know, that's why we have this representation of all these different boards on the CPC to do that. I didn't have anything in particular myself to bring up, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to do that as we're going into the new year here. Wendy, did you have anything else that you wanted to bring up?
No, just wanting the CPC to take a more active role in recommending projects and, you know, seeking them out rather than just sit back and wait for projects, so. It's just kind of a opening up of the conversation with the member boards and committees.
Was it thought? You know, anything or is it more related to the board's responsibilities? I, you know.
I think it could be anything. You know, Anne, we have a community preservation plan where we outline, you know, the needs of the community and projects and that kind of thing, so your input will help inform that as well as the public hearing that we're required to have. So it doesn't have to be related to the planning board specifically.
I have two ideas that are kind of related to what we've been doing at the planning board. I know in Newburyport, they, in many places, they, every year, there's a standing chunk that gets adopted for their Affordable Housing Trust or its equivalent. So perhaps the advocate for this would be the Affordable Housing Trust, but that they come, if we can use this for creation of housing, they come looking for money to put into their trust fund, and they would have to determine how they would characterize it, what they would want, but that's one idea. A standing amount or a standing line item. And the other is, was this talk at the last meeting about the trails and Michelle and the maintenance and the building and all that, and that's outdoor recreation. So there could come from some entity a request for a standing amount for trail creation or maintenance that would come out of CPEA funds. I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Anne. I like that.
I've got one more. You know, I wear a lot of hats, so I'm the clerk of All Saints Church and St. John's Hall. We're in conversation with groups who are looking for housing, affordable housing, either through the YWCA or the group who's helping Afghan refugees. We're now including the Brothers across the street, the Society of St. John the Evangelist. If we were to develop that hall into housing, it needs a place for a septic system. And so there's a lot of, many, many steps here, but we applied for CPC funds for that building probably ten years ago and were shot down. But it's an historic building, and if we can keep it and do an adaptive reuse into housing, that would be something that it would be lovely to get some additional funds to work with whatever developer is going to get into there. The group working with Afghan refugees in Newburyport bought a property in Amesbury and put one or two of their families there, but they still have twenty-one people in the basement of St. Paul's Church, and they'd like to find a more permanent place for them, so. We've been talking to that group pretty pretty regularly now.
So that, there would be something out of, like, affordable housing would request that.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, I recall vaguely that request for the church, but I think it was while a church, it was somewhat vague and it was for the entity of the church and certainly for the building. But it was, it was not specific as to a service, I think.
Both buildings are in dire need of help. We're spending thirty-four thousand dollars this week to put a new heating system in the church. But the brickwork, the roof, I mean, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work. But that is the gateway to West Newbury, and having those lovely buildings there, I think, sets the tone for what people expect when they want to see a beautiful town. That's a great entry. It's beautifully landscaped. It's a beautiful building. If you, you know, if you've never been in them, they're, I'll take you. I got the keys. But they deserve to be restored, maintained, and adaptively reused. We have a very small congregation now who come to church on Sunday, and we haven't come since it got cold because we have no heat. But as I say, we've just written the checks to put a new heating system in there, so we're not giving up. These were the Emory sisters and the poor families, you know, treasured buildings, and we don't want them to fall apart on our watch, so. CPC funds would be very welcome there in some capacity, just to put it on your agenda, Tim. Thank you.
Would you, yeah, I think you're treading on issues where people, you know, are going to be uncomfortable with, you know, religious
Yeah, that was our Paul's argument, was that separation of church and state. That's not what we're trying to do here. Our mission is to add housing and to create
Well, yes, but is the deed structure and whatnot, would that be changed in some fashion? I think that's, that's something that you have to grapple with.
The housing use is spearheaded by the rector of St. Paul's Church, but he has, I mean, these are Muslim Afghan immigrants. They have there's, and the building was originally built by the Emory family as a community resource, so there are a lot of arguments that, and, you know, that's, I don't know, you know, I'm biased here. This is
No, no, it's good. I'm just trying to
I've been here.
Say, you know, I recall why things didn't happen in the past.
Right.
And I think it has to be structured in a way that, and I'm supportive of the idea. But you'd have to structure it in a way that you eliminate the concern that you're, there's, you know, it it's not like you're buying a house for a family in town. I think, you know, and the deed is held. Well, no, it isn't. Because the deed would still, it would still be under the church control, and I think you have to work through that.
Oh, I think, I think it's inevitable that we're going to have to give up control of it to some degree. And right now, actually, our little local vestry is not in charge. We are so indebted to the diocese at this point that a property really is the diocese's responsibility, but like churches everywhere, all denominations, it's we're a dying breed. And fortunately, the Emorys did leave us a pretty good endowment, so we can spend money, to some extent, fixing them, but it will, it would probably take the entire endowment, not just the thirty thousand dollars we get a year of income on it, to do anything substantial there. So we're holding it together. But it's a bigger than the five of us who are currently on the vestry can handle.
Yeah, no, but your point's well taken, you know, the innuable Catholic churches that have closed for a variety of reasons. And they've been sold. They've been sold to private developers to create housing. And whether it's affordable or not, they were sold. And so I'm just saying, you have to think through, that's, to me, the way to go and to garner some public support for this. If you're trying to say churches everywhere, the Catholic Church sold off properties and they don't own them anymore. So if you're, you know, want to put a program together, yeah, that's something to strongly consider.
Well, nonetheless, I would love to be on the CPC's bandwidth somewhere, that this is a property that warrants preservation, restoration, and adaptive reuse.
Joe, you can follow up with that.
Thank you.
And the trail creation and
And saying, is that, you know, the Open Space Committee, I think, have reconsiderable interest in that.
Right, and the Milpon Committee, because
Milpon, yeah.
The Sawmill Brook parcel is going to take some trail building, some trail designing
Yep.
to use all that.
Good point. Yep, that's right, Deb.
I have a question for Wendy, and I'll draw on your your conservation experience. And you'll laugh, but there's a little swamp area near me here, and it has a small stand of fragmites. And the rest of it's native plants.
Get rid of it.
Well, can, A, can those be eradicated in some fashion? And where I'm going is, is it something that, you know, if you're looking for a couple thousand dollars, grand, I mean, that you can buy some boots and gloves for a bunch of kids or something under supervision to go and take care of these things from time to time?
Yeah, actually, Michelle
Or does it get more complicated because Michelle is involved?
Well, no, actually, she's run several volunteer days. We've been removing invasives from the Cherry Hill property on the reservoir, and she's, you know, organized volunteers, including the interns, to do the removal. So to answer your question from a Concom perspective, if it's on your property, you do need to get it permitted, you know, if it's in wetlands, but
Yeah, it's actually Concom land.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I know, I've been meaning to take a picture and send it to somebody and just say, you know, I I'm glad to hear that there is some effort. Maybe I missed it because there's no news in the newspaper. But there's an effort, and listen, if you need a little money, this is the, you know, it's, again, it's some outdoor, give them a couple of grand, Tim. Gloves and boots.
So the
And bug spray.
Yeah, so we've had interns the last two years, some were interns, and they've mapped, you know, the stands of fragmites and other invasives throughout town. And then there was also an article in the last town meeting to actually pay a professional invasive removal company to start attacking the most heavily. Yeah, so it's definitely, yeah, priority of the conservation agent.
Well, maybe I'll send her a picture and maybe
Yep.
West Newbury wild native Nancy Pile and Carol Decker are the heads of that illustrious group, and their goal is to deal with invasives and grow plants that were here before they came.
Well, she's, I haven't gone up to her door. She's on Tewksbury Lane, but
Yes, she is.
Yeah. I see her grass grow tall in May.
And, yeah, no, no, leave the leaves. Yep, yeah.
Okay.
I think Michelle's your person if it's Concom land, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, Tim, you got a couple of ideas.
Yeah, this is great. Yeah, this is more than I had bargained for. This is
More than you wished for.
Yeah, I'm glad Wendy was here to chime in and to hear it.
It's good.
Thanks, Wendy.
Sure.
Okay, excellent. Moving along. Nine, ten, let's try to wrap it up. We have minutes from two meetings. One was very short.
Pretty brief.
And maybe if we've read the yellow, we can do that, too.
Yeah, I think they're simple.
That's good. I didn't have any suggested changes, but if anyone else? No? Hearing none, move to accept the minutes of the fifth, right? December fifth? No, I'm sorry, which one?
Nineteenth.
December nineteenth.
No, that was the fifth, and now I just
We did the fifth. We didn't vote on the fifth.
Right.
There we go, so I moved to accept the minutes of December fifth.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I approve.
Four zero. All right, the nineteenth now. A little longer, but
Pretty straightforward, though.
Yeah, next page. That was fine, wasn't it? Anyone else? Okay, approved, motion to approve the minutes of December nineteenth.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor? Brian Murphy?
R D nine. Deb Hamilton.
Tim? I presume Tim voted on that.
I did.
Yes, thank you. All right. Yes, thank you. All right.
Move to adjourn.
No, no, not yet.
Sorry.
Not yet. Sue, is there any correspondence we need to look at, or?
Don't recall that there was any correspondence.
Okay. I didn't see anything in the package. Genders, I just have one item to mention. Again, it's back in the Boston Globe this Sunday. I'm still a stickler. I hate paying the six bucks, but I, I like that, just to sit and read the paper. They had a terrific article on the costs to develop housing. And it was a front-page article and then another two, two-plus pages on the inside. And the gist was, I mean, just crazy numbers, talking to developers and, and construction firms. And it was about, well, you know, there's a, a new development in, just outside the city, Charleston, Everett, whatever, using modular housing. And that's been around for a number of years, and maybe that's going to bring some of the costs down. But they said, you know, it, it's still a ridiculous amount of money, no matter how you slice it, to develop housing. And it was, it was just, it's a sobering article, that no matter what we do, MBTA and zoning and whatnot, it's the cost of construction. So if, if you have the paper and you want to read about it, I'd recommend it. It, it actually ties in a little bit with John Sarkis' note.
Yes, that you can't build for under six hundred thousand.
It's just staggering. It really is. Yeah.
It's not just the construction costs, it's all the.
It, it's the all-ins, yeah.
There are a lot of great things about the state of Massachusetts, but the highly regulated environment is.
Yes.
A daunting, expensive thing to deal with.
Yeah, the number of people that the Fuscos have to deal with on this river road thing. And then the weeks of work.
It does add up, so, anyway.
Yeah.
That's it. I don't know where, what happened to Ray. I had actually tried to reach him on another matter, a personal matter, and he didn't respond to that. So I'm, I'm a little concerned, but hopefully everything is okay.
He did make it in to, to sign the Mylar, so.
Yeah.
Over the holidays.
Yeah, I, I'd sent him a, an email with a reminder, and I haven't heard from him. I'm not seeing him here tonight is, is odd.
Unusual.
Yeah, unusual. Okay. That's it. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? I, all of us. Keep the shovels handy. We might get a little snow on Sunday. Who knows?
Yes, still a little.
Something different. See you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if I'm not here on the sixteenth, it's because I'm in Portugal.
Obrigada.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
See you.